This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting, Public Works, Environmental Services, Utilities and Facilities. This is Monday, September 21st. Now, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda, but before I do that, are there any amendments to the agenda, any additions? Okay, thank you, that's fine, but I have a mover to accept the agenda as shown.
I'll move it up.
Thank you, do I have a second here? Mr. Packwood, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Kerry, thank you. Okay, next on the list is the disclosure of peculiary interest and the general nature thereof.
None by me.
I hear none?
None by me.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, business arising from the previous committee, Committee of the Whole Minutes, if any, and that is in your package, that is on page one to seven.
I haven't noted anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, I have nothing, I have nothing noted, thank you, we'll carry on. Delegations and presentations, we have none here tonight, bit of a surprise, but none here tonight. Discussion items, none, none here tonight. That leads us to number seven, which is the action and information items, and seven A is the severance application for Lockwood on Hoy Street and Cardinal. Now Wendy was going to speak to this, I thought, but that has been changed now, so Mr. CAO, if you would highlight that for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Typically, these severances go to CDC. Unfortunately, we're in a little bit of a time constraint in this circumstance, we didn't get it in time for CDC, so that's why we're bringing it here tonight at the, at the Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities meeting. So basically, this is a severance to sever, to sever a parcel of land on Hoy Street, so that each dwelling unit will be on a separate lot. This went to Committee of Adjustment on June 2020, to grant approval for the maximum lot coverage on the property to be changed from thirty percent to forty-seven percent. With respect to the planning hierarchy, it, this, this severance application is in compliance with the zoning bylaw, the township official plan, and the county official plan with respect to what's being, what's being proposed. Of note, just with our official plan, some of the objectives of residential development in township settlement policy areas include a range and mix of low, medium, and high-density housing types. And just a small reference to the, to the current zoning bylaw, with respect to provisions for semi-detached dwellings, a semi-detached dwelling may be severed and sold as an individual unit. The applicant has provided the required fee for the, for the severance to the municipality, and the recommendation before you tonight is that, Committee recommends that council recommend in favor of severance B-88-20 Lockwood.
Are there any, any questions or concerns around the table before, before I ask for a mover and second here? Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Just two, if you...
Go ahead.
...are looking to the, to the CAO, first is no, when residents were notified, no residential complaints received about the severance?
So, the, the county is in, in, in the process of getting the public notice?
So, that would be, people would have the ability to have feedback before the next council meeting?
They would, they, they would certainly have noticed before the, it is heard at the, at the counties.
Okay, and second would be, and I know the answer to this already, but I just, I just wanted to, both have separate, complete separate services and connections, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Thank you. And this is the, just a question for my own interest, this is the same type of severance that was given directly across the road to the lot that was built by the same builder approximately a year or so ago?
Through, through the chair, correct. If you, if you look at page eleven or, or twelve, you will see on the north side of Hoy Street, six A and six B, that would have been the, the severance that would have been done, I believe, in last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you, any other questions? All right, do I have a mover for, for the recommendation? Councilor Hunter, do I have a second here? Councilor Dillabon, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Kerry, thank you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, just before we move on, if you, if you would indulge me for just a minute, I just want to, I had no questions with the, with the minutes, but I just wanted to refer, because this is a public meeting, and the meeting is being televised, I just want to refer back to page five of sixty-nine of the previous minutes, where it is noted on item number K of the, of the minutes, that the Committee recommended the sale of a piece of property on South Street, here in Spencerville, to high bidder Lockwood Brothers Construction, for fifty-five thousand dollars plus taxes, that may be applicable. So, I'm just pointing out, Mr. Chairman, for the gallery, so there are no surprises to the residents of Spencerville, that the, the buyer of the lot will eventually, I suspect, come into the office and request a building permit for that lot. And what he intends to do with the lot will become obvious to the staff at the time that he requests a building permit. But, just so there's no surprises, Mr. Chairman, that will be two meetings in a row at which this has become a public item.
Thank you, that is correct, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Okay, the, the motion was carried, so we're going to now move on, you'll just bear with me for a moment, please. The electronics are working wonderful, but just not fast enough. That brings us to seven B, which is the Facilities and Parks, Cardinal and Spencerville Arena reopening report, and I'm going to ask Mr. Spencer to highlight this report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought I would give just a brief update of how the last five weeks have gone at the arena, and a projection of what our plans are going forward. As you can see, we've been open, and the, the transfer of players in and out of the arena has actually gone quite well. We've had a couple hiccups, but nothing too serious, and when asked for clarification on any of the associations using the ice, any of the information that we require is sent immediately. So basically, the associations are the ones that, that track their, their individuals that come into the arena, we track the, we track the parents. So if the Rito Kings are on the ice, they leave from four-thirty till six, they register who was on the ice at that time, and they keep that, that record for thirty days. Periodically, once a week, I will just pick at random a couple of different association and different times, and ask for their lists, just to make sure that they are informing the proper documentation, in case we require it for the health unit. Starting next week, October the third, as we all know, the, it's basically been fifteen minutes, the players have to come in, they're already dressed, we will be changing that on October the third at the Cardinal Rink. We will be allowing the players to dress and undress in the change rooms, they'll still only be given the fifteen-minute parameter time. Players then will, I'm sure some will still come dressed, they'll still have to wear their mask in, in the change rooms, as they are doing right now. Parents will also be allowed in the facility, starting October the third, where we are going to allow twenty parents per rental. There will be some rentals that, there may be more than twenty kids on the ice, if it's a South Gremble Association rental, or if it's a Rito Kings, there could be more than twenty. It'll be the association's responsibility to determine who gets the opportunity to come into the rink. The reason we're going with twenty per ice session is because we are not having any downtime in between the rentals, so twenty parents will be coming in, they'll come into the lobby area, and they will be escorted out to the bleacher area, we'll have the bleacher area set up in two different coordinates, section A, section B, and, and each rental will stay at, at a separate designated area. When the rental is completed, the players, the players will leave the ice, if the parents do not have to help with their children, then they will exit the building on the east side, the east exit door of the arena. At that time, then staff will allow the next group of parents that are, will be waiting in the lobby, that will come in fifteen minutes before their rental, and they'll be escorted out to section B, and we'll just do the process again, we will clean section A while the parents are in section B. So, that's what we have in plan for October the third. Also, we have just completed a Google form application, all parents will be required to sign the waiver forms, so we have now adapted an online process for that. So if you are going to the arena tonight for six o'clock, any time upwards of four hours before your rental, you will be able to go on, answer the six questions, that are the same questions that are on the form that you would fill out at the front door, and an email gets generated to our computer at the front door, and it'll say, for example, you Cameron registered at five forty-five, and he's registered, and he's answering yes or no to all the questions. If one of the answers is yes, and it pops, it'll pop up with a red, and then we wouldn't allow that individual in. So we've got that set up, and we'll be rolling that out to the parents and the associations. That's just to try to alleviate congestion at the door. If someone doesn't want to do the form online, that's fine, they can fill out the form at the arena, or they can print the form off our website, but the easier way to do it, and it takes less than a minute to fill out the form online, and the link will be given to all the associations, the link will be put on our website as well. Rentals will be reduced to an hour. For the last six weeks, we've been going with hour-and-a-half rentals. Again, primarily, the hour rental association that uses that the most are, is the South Gremble Minor Hockey, the Rito Kings, the Thunder, the Cyclones, the Braves, they all use hour-and-a-half, hour-and-a-half slots, and that won't change. It'll just be South Gremble at the lower tier, the IP, the novice, the Atom, that will use the, the hour, the hour rentals. And again, the, the fourth thing that we're going to introduce is, back in Cardinal, is on October the ninth, which is the Friday night, we'll introduce our public skating back again, and we will limit that to thirty people to start, and we'll see how that goes. The Spencerville Arena will start up operation on October the tenth, which is a Saturday, and we will follow all the same policies and procedures for that rink as well. The online form that I indicated, for the parents to be able to fill out, will indicate it has rink ingredient or rink responsible, so they'll be able to indicate which one, and so those tracking forms will be relatively easier for the frontline staff, and again, hoping that we don't have the congestion at the front doors. And then, just one other thing that is not in the report, if I, if I may, each year, October the first, we send out the billing for arena advertisers for this upcoming season. And I have been in contact with a number of advertisers, and they, a lot of them that advertise on our boards are small businesses in, in the communities, and some of them have expressed a desire to potentially take their signs down, because they can't afford the money right now. They've also indicated that, basically, for the last six months, their advertising sign has been up on the boards, and no one has seen it, because the arena, for the most part, have been closed to the general public. So I'm just bringing that forward tonight, to see if there, is any will for discussion on whether or not we could look at some sort of alternative for this year, for our advertisers for the arena, the two arenas?
Thank you, thank you for, for that information, Mr. Spencer. Now, I forgot to mention, there's no recommendation here on this, this is an information item, only...
That is correct.
So, I will open the, I will open the floor up to questions and concerns, and perhaps that, that issue that you just mentioned will be, will be, will be discussed. So I'm seeing Deputy Mayor Deschamps.
Can I sneak in ahead of the mayor, just for one sec? With, with respect, I don't want to go ahead of the mayor, I just want to say with respect...
I'm sorry, I didn't even see the mayor.
It's okay, he was up ahead of me, I just wanted, I just...
I'm used to being ignored.
I want, no, I'm not ignoring you at all, I just want to jump in before that becomes a discussion and I'm still at the table. If we can keep that one to the last point, I do have one of those signs, I want to be part of the, of, of what's written here, but I don't want to be part of the discussion when it comes to, to signs. I own one of those signs, and certainly understand where the people Mike has talked about her coming from, but I, I don't think that I should be part of that discussion, so...
Not here, it's just a, he just brought...
I still don't want to be part of the discussion, so...
Okay, so, because, because there's no recommendation regarding this, then does, does Deputy Mayor Deschamps have to fill out a conflict of interest?
I think I do.
Through, through, through the chair, I, I, I would say that it would be, it would be worthwhile for the deputy mayor to fill out.
Very good, Deputy Mayor, you'll do that, then it will exclude you from the, from the discussions, if any.
I can still, I just want to be, I can still contribute.
You can stay here, but you're not going to speak to it, if, if, or you can pick a seat in the, in the, in the gallery, if you so desire.
Well, at this point, I'm not really sure what I should do.
Well, except for the issue with regard to the advertisers...
Yeah.
CAO?
He's not...
I think we just need to clarify at the point when you're going to discuss the advertising.
Well, I...
Can we make it like a B1, then? Or is that adjusting the agenda?
Well, I think, I think, because there's no recommendation, I think we can just discuss it openly right, right, right now.
Well, I'm not, I'm not comfortable, though, with, with it being part of the discussion while I'm still at the table, though.
Could bring it up under new business.
Or counselor inquire? Well, we can't do that, it's, we...
There's no doubt I'm in direct conflict with that one, so if it's part of this discussion, I...
Why don't we, why don't you just have the discussion on, on his report here first, and after we discuss that, then you can step away at the table, and we'll discuss the sign issue.
Very good.
Is that clear enough?
I think, I think, I think that's, that's reasonable, just as, as long as we don't discuss the, the advertising, respect that, and then we'll, we'll make note of the, the deputy mayor removing himself from the, from the table for that advertising portion, once it, once we reach that.
Okay, very good, so what I'll, so what I'll do right now, then, I'll ask for concerns and questions, other than signage talk, and then we'll, after, after that, we'll give you the signage talk, which will give Deputy Mayor Deschamps a chance to, to join the audience, whatever. So, any, any questions, concerns regarding everything but signage? Mr. Packwood?
Through the chair, on line two on page sixteen, where you talk about a maximum of fifty people in the building, I thought they were advising that to a total of twenty-five.
Ten.
Through...
Ten in most.
Through the chair, that is not including sports facilities or arenas.
Not monitored.
Yeah.
Not monitored yet. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so, my question concerns the staffing, how many extra staff, let's just talk for a minute about the ingredient center alone, how many extra staff do we have at the ingredient center for, let's say, the last week, compared to an ordinary week of operation?
Through the chair, to Mr. Mayor, right now, we have, we have a COVID front desk staff, and that typically is not a position that we would have, and then we have a rink assistant, and the rink assistant helps the, the facility operator in the evenings and on weekends. Typically, we would have a rink assistant upwards of about twenty-four hours a week on, on a normal week, without the COVID situation, but now we, the, the rink assistant is there with the facility operator, basically, from four o'clock till ten, ten-thirty, depending on how late the rental goes, Monday to Friday, and on weekends, they're there, basically, from seven-thirty in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, till, again, ten, eleven o'clock at night, depending on how long the rentals, excuse me, go during the day.
Okay, so, so through the chair, to the CAO now, so, what we've just heard are costs that are over and above normal operating costs, we've, we've asked the treasurer to capture all costs over and above normal operating costs, that, and those costs could be taking them from the modernization money, so is that being captured and tracked, are those extra costs being captured and tracked by the treasurer as COVID-19 extra costs?
So, so through the chair, yes, those would be eligible costs through that safe, safe restart funding, that, that we will be receiving, so they, they are being tracked and monitored.
Second question, so, the second question deals with the experience that we've encountered at the ingredient center over the past, did you say we've been open five weeks?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, I understand how the system worked, I'd like to know the reaction to the system, the public reaction to the system, the overall tone of the public reaction to the system.
Through the chair, to the mayor, I, I would say that the, the reception has been very well received, from the players, from the parents, from the coaching staff, there's been a lot of praise that has been sent my way, and I pass that on to my staff, for the way that they've interacted with the individuals that have come in the facility. We're trying to educate some, not many, but there are some that still have to be educated, and that's what we do, and we've had to give a couple warnings to a couple of individuals, and they've accepted those warnings, and we haven't had any further issues. So I would say, overall, it, it's been a very well-received process. I think, for a lot of the kids, it's just an avenue for them to be able to get rid of some of their built-up energy.
An outlet?
Yes.
So, so again, through the chair, I may, so, are the learnings from the five weeks at the ingredient center, you believe that those learnings are transferable to the Spencerville's opening on, I think you're saying...
October tenth.
October tenth, so those learnings are transferable, well, of course, that's going to mean putting additional staff in place there as well, are you finding trouble recruiting the additional staff?
Through the chair, to the mayor, we advertised for the last two weeks, and we did receive applications, and I will be doing some interviews this Thursday, and I don't anticipate having any problem right now. Right now, our, some of our COVID staff, that I call them, because that's what, really the reason why they're working for us right now, they're a lot of our canteen workers.
Yes.
And right now, as I indicated in the report, in the next report, we won't open the canteen during the month of October, so we will be okay for that. If we decide at some point to open up the canteen, then we would have to, to reevaluate our, our staffing protocol.
And last question, is there sufficient demand for ice time to justify the opening of the Spencerville Arena?
Through the chair, to Mr. Mayor, I, I would say there is. The normal associations, like the minor hockey programs, the, the figure skating programs, they've all requested their, their allotted ice that they had in the previous year. Where we're having a bit of an issue is with some of the, of the rec hockey leagues, whether it be men's, women's, or the co-ed leagues, some of those are having a bit of an issue getting their teams together, because of the fact that they have to be in bubbles, and to be able to play only one or two teams. So, right now, we're at about twelve to thirteen hours of less ice rented between the two arenas for the same time period last year, and the system is open now.
Twelve to fifteen hours per week?
Per week.
Okay.
Not, not per rink, just combined.
Total, about the fifteen-hour shortfall rental.
And there are some people that have acquired, there are some people that are not playing, have not signed up for local minor hockey programs, and are going to rent ice on their own, have their own bubble of twenty kids, and, and those kids will go out on the ice, so I'm starting to see some of those rentals starting to come in now, so we will rent some, but some of the men's league slots, or the rec league slots, are nine-thirty till eleven, so that's a little late for minor hockey programs. So, but I think, overall, I think we'll be okay, we won't be maxed out, but I still feel there was a need to have the second rink put in to help the associations.
And, Mr. Chair, if you'll indulge me, last question, I thought the previous one would be the last question, but I want to get this question in. I assume that, that the, that the kids and the parents that we're seeing are from not only the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, but from Prescott and Augusta as well, is that correct? And the reason I'm asking, of course, is that I don't recall ever receiving an answer to the letter that we directed to Prescott and Augusta.
Through the chair, to Mr. Mayor, you are correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Dillabon?
I guess I want to, to the chair, to, to Mike, is the public skating begins October ninth, and you're allowing thirty participants, what, what did we have last year? Like, did you, did we ever keep track last year, the year before? Will we run into a problem if I did my skate sharp?
Through the chair, to Counsel Dillabon, not if you're the one of the first thirty.
Good answer.
The Sat, or the, the Friday night skating program in Cardinal, the numbers averaged anywhere between twenty-five and fifty participants each week, so it, the numbers were good, but we're keep, we're capping it at thirty, just because there are, there is a rental after, so it's the whole getting people in and getting people out process and that, and so...
Okay, I'll leave early, thanks.
Counselor Hunter?
Just a couple of questions, one, for the lower level from South Gremble, pre-novice and, and stuff that are certain, how are they handling that, because they know when the figure skating and Rockford Figure Skating Club, all, all the star skates aren't, they're not hosting it this year, because they're not allowed to touch any kid on, on ice, so looks like Ron Baker's, Tim Benz, when, how are they going to handle that, are they running it this year, or...
Through the chair, to Counsel Hunter, that's the only one, Counselor Hunter, that I haven't heard about, is, is the Ron Baker group, and I know that the IP and the novice group typically have ran over at this rink here, but we've switched them to Cardinal, and the reason we've done that is because there's, there's more, there's twenty-five to thirty kids per session, and those sessions all require a parent to bring their kid into the rink, their kid, their child, I should say, sorry, where Adam Peewee, Benham and Up, the, the parents can drop the kid off at the door, and he can assess himself, get himself ready to go down the ice, but novice and the IP programs, that's, it's a little tougher, so that's why I've asked to move them to Cardinal, there's a little bit more room in, in the change rooms there, as opposed to having thirty kids over here, it'd be a little bit more of a, of a crunch, to get the people in and out safely, in my opinion, so...
The association hasn't said nothing about their minor hockey...
Not the Ron Baker group, no.
HOE hasn't said nothing about assisting the kids up or anything?
No, no, there has not been any discussion about that.
Other question is, we had... Uh, other question is, uh, we had spot ice rentals before, kicking ice rentals be, before in the off-hours. Are, are we going to start as the season moves on, or?
Uh, yes, that actually just went into effect today, uh, the drop-in rate. Um, and we started advertising that on social media, uh, I think it went up on Friday. Um, and that is, uh, again, if the ice is available, um, it's not something that they can pre-book in advance. And, um, so if they show up and the ice is available, then they would fill out their forms. And they would come in, they get the ice for the fifty minutes, and then they have to exit. They'd have to do all the same social distancing and protocols that just the general public, uh, have to do, uh, on a normal basis for one of the associations. And again, we would keep those forms, um, like we do all the other ones.
We're going to raise the price, I know it was ten dollars, are we going to raise the price a little bit this year, or last year, senior and stuff we're going to have to do?
Uh, through the chair, we're, the only way to, to alter the change is to bring the, the fee schedule bylaw back. And typically, we only do that, uh, in January or, or late December, so, um, there's.
I don't mean the regular ice hours, I just mean for the ticket.
Yeah, but that's still part of our fee schedule, so in order to, to alter that, we have to bring it back to council, so. Um, I would just suggest for the first while, let's just see, um, how it pans out. I don't know how busy it will be, or whether or not it'll, it'll get utilized the way, potentially, or potentially that it has in the past. It's.
They're going to live it on the number you allow on, or?
Yes, the, the maximum number that would be, would be thirty, that would be permitted to go on the ice. And at that point, then they're paying the rental of a, of an hour of ice. It's whatever's greater.
Anything else, Counselor? Gentlemen, uh, Deputy Mayor, I know you wanted to end on something here, go ahead.
I got a bunch. Um, uh, first, uh, Mike, thanks, it, it seems like a good plan, lots of good thoughts, and obviously, you know, very well done. You've done a lot of preparation, and it seems like you're using a great deal of caution to keep residents, uh, safe and, you know, following health unit guidelines. So, uh, first to be commended for that. Second is, uh, I think you received, uh, that same, uh, commendation through an article that was written in the newspaper, and, and, you know, well, well done with, with that. Last one, you know, just to compliment again, was, uh, I've received excellent feedback on the arena and Hockey Live webcams. The, the, uh, parents that have seen them have said nothing but good, good things about them, so, um, you know, well done. Now, questions? Um, I guess through the C A O and to you as well, Mike, because it's kind of for both of you on different, different ways, but, um, is insurance an issue? Um, with reopening faci- like facilities? Um, from what I've heard, um, uh, through a lot of different organizations like Kings Hockey and, and Cyclones and things like that, that, uh, the insurance that's required, uh, not just for facilities, but through the teams is becoming increasingly hard to get and, and very, very, uh, expensive. So, have you encountered or heard any of that? It's, it's just, I've heard that through a few meetings that I've been.
Yeah, uh, through the chair to Deputy Mayor. Any, um, hockey association, whether it be the Kings, Cyclones, South Grenville, their insurance is under Hockey Canada. They don't have to get separate policies, they're part of Hockey Canada, and that fee hasn't changed, from what I understand, yet. Um, so.
No.
I don't anticipate, um, because all those fees have already been, they've, the bulk of the associations have had their registrations, and it's, it's based on a, on a per-child basis. Um, so if, if South Grenville has five hundred kids, then it's a flat fee of per child, and they would submit that, that, that funding to, uh, to H E O. Um, so, um, I, I do know the men's league teams, uh, associations and that, that we are, um, um, suggesting that they get their own insurance. It's not mandatory, but we are suggesting that they do, and we put them in contact, in contact with a number of insurance companies that, that deal with that. Um, but it's not a requirement. Um, from a township's perspective, uh, we haven't been in contact, or we haven't been contacted by, by our insurance company to indicate that, uh, there is any changes.
Um, can I keep going? Sure. I do have a few. Uh, okay, so, um, uh, today you saw, or we saw that, um, or this weekend, whatever, we saw that, uh, there are going to be regional, you know, closures on, uh, you know, restricting the cities, Ottawa, uh, Toronto, you know, that, that sort of thing, to try to get, uh, larger groups settled down. What if we experience, um, one of our free ice times where somebody from Ottawa wants to come down and, and do it? Or what if we, uh, experience the same thing for, um, you know, our group of thirty, the arenas are closed in Ottawa again, but, but they say, hey, Edwardsburg Cardinals Arena's open, and it's one of the only ones around? Uh, do we have a mechanism in place that, that, you know, keeps our residents first and keeps, uh, keeps the city issues out of our rural areas?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor. Um, since we put the ice in, um, we haven't had any rentals from Ottawa, from the Ottawa area. Um, it's been primarily just our local programs that typically rent ice. Um, there are, there have been some people from Brockville or some people from, from Kempel that have rented, but not from the city itself. And it's basically people that are associated with minor hockey programs that, that those programs just hadn't started yet.
Do you have a couple more?
Uh, no, I, that kind of cuts off the rest of them, so no, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions at all? Okay, uh, thank, thank you, thank you for, for that, Mike, uh, that's, that's fine. Um, okay, so now, uh, Mr. Spencer has brought up the, the issue of signage, so I'm going to move to that discussion now uh, on that, so Deputy Mayor, you can, uh, move from the table. Thank you. So it would be noted that Deputy Mayor Deschamp left the, left the, uh, the discussion table, uh, this time. Thank you. Okay, uh, from what I understand with, uh, with Mr. Spencer, we have signage that, uh, is, uh, is, has been there for many years, in most cases, I think. Uh, and, uh, some people are saying that because of this situation this year, uh, this abnormal year, uh, they feel that they didn't get the exposure that they are paying for, uh, with their sign, their board signage. Is it just board signage or anywhere in the arena?
It's, it's board and wall.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Uh, so as you, as you read, it's board, it's board and wall. So I'm going to open it up to, uh, to discussion, and I'll start with, uh, Mayor Seale.
I'll get right to the heart of the matter. Um, uh, first of all, to save staff a lot of work removing signs, and to make things really simple, I would like to suggest that, uh, Mr. Spencer gather letters from those who do not wish to renew, and we have those letters on file, and that we extend to all of the advertisers the next season free gratis. Now hopefully, that will prevent them from asking for a refund in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, for the balance of twenty twenty, and it will give them free gratis advertising with their existing signs through twenty twenty-one. And hopefully, with the letters on file, the treasurer would be able to book that as a non-revenue expense. So we would claim that as an expense, non-revenue, revenue not received. And, uh, I think, I think, again, the Safe Opening, uh, Fund would, would enable us to do that. But that can be checked, the treasurer can check that, but I think that that's the way I'd like to see us proceed.
Could I just make a clarification, Mike, before you, uh, before you answer that? Uh, this, this charge that you were going to send out is for the twenty twenty-one season, is that correct? Not the nineteen twenty season?
Okay, um, okay, so, um, basically, um, everyone is paid up to date right now.
Correct.
Until when?
Uh, we send out the bills October first.
So they're paid till September thirty?
And that was collected last year.
Okay.
So in our revenue, uh, stream on our budget, there is a two-line items, one for each arena. Mm, that funding is still there, noth- nothing has been collected yet. That is always done in October, and it's always based on the hockey season, not the calendar season. So, right now, there is, I've been contacted by a number of individuals that have asked for some sort of leniency. I've also been contacted by one individual, um, who says he just wants his sign taken down. So, that's where we're at right now. So right now, typically, we, we would send out October first for the next calendar year.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, uh, Mike, so we do have one customer that wants to be removed totally.
That's correct.
Okay.
But that customer is probably not aware of what I just said. How would he react if he said, if we said we were going to leave it for free?
Yes, yes, very, 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 very true. Very good. Counsel Dillabah?
Yeah, so you only have the one that is complaining because he hasn't got the money, is that right? Uh, through the chair?
No, I just, through the chair, I, I've been contacted by a number of businesses, um, and only one business said that they just didn't want their sign up this year. They didn't want to pay.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor, I mean, I, I don't know why we don't make it simple, like, you said six months, some people were complaining because it was closed for six months, why not just go from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-one to March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two?
Well, i- i- if I may through the chair, um, I would kind of go with what the mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor had indicated, saying basically going forward for the next calendar year that their sign would be paid for. Is that, am I putting that correct?
Yeah, it's quite clear, thank you.
Because we're going by the hockey season.
That's correct.
Oh, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
We're getting mixed messages here. Is the money that they pay for the calendar year, or is it paid for the hockey year? The money that they pay?
They're billed October first.
Yes, that doesn't mean anything.
For the next year.
For the next calendar year?
That's correct.
Okay, so, do you book the money as you're sending out your invoices on October one?
That money stays in a, in twenty twenty money.
Okay, so that's twenty twenty dollars.
That's correct.
Anybody that hasn't paid becomes a receivable at the end of December.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So it's twenty twenty revenue that we would be collecting or not collecting?
That is correct.
So I'm suggesting we not collect it.
I, I understand.
Counsel Hunter?
Uh, I can agree with giving a break here, uh, one question I have, I haven't got it in front of me, and maybe should have, but what is our budgeted line item for the revenue?
Through the chair to Counsel Hunter, um, it's ten thousand for Ingredion and five thousand, five to six thousand for, uh, the Spencerville Arena.
So, it's a fair amount of money we're writing, writing, writing off here, I have no, no problem with that. But I do know that some of our, our signage sponsors are grateful for us, and I suggest that we send the letter, letter out stating that we're going to write them off for the, for the year, but that if they felt so that they'd like to make a donation towards the arena, it'd be gratefully accepted.
Mr. Chair, I, I just have problems with the words write-off, because we're not really writing anything off.
No, no, no.
We're just extending, we're extending their sign lease for another year on a free gratis basis. We're going to still collect the money, we've already got the money from the Safe Reopening Fund.
That's correct.
So it, that money is just going to transfer from the fund account to our revenue account. So, we're not writing anything off, all we're doing is extending a lot of good free will.
Yeah, well, I know, I grant that, but it's still, we don't know how much money we're going to spend on this before we're done. We only have so much money there.
Absolutely.
We only have so much money there, so I'm just suggesting, I'm all in favor of giving them a year's free gratis, but I'm just saying, I know we have, have some good corporate sponsors that pay all the time, and I just.
Oh, give them the opportunity.
Just give them the opportunity, say, if you would like, we're writing this off for giving you a free gratis, but if you'd like to make a donation towards to help, help us through the situation, it is still gratefully received, it's received, and we'd give you a tax receipt for a donation to the township for it.
Gentlemen? Hearing, hearing, I, um, um, okay, I, uh, myself, my, my comments are, I totally agree that I think we should, uh, should, because of the abnormal year and, and the lack of patrons at the, at the arenas, I think they should, uh, get, uh, get, get a gratis, um, um, showing for, for the next, uh, for the next season or calendar year. And, uh, I'm also happy to hear that, uh, that money will be go, going to our coffers, but from the, uh, from the restart fund. So, uh, so that, that, that's good as well. Um, so I think, uh, and Mr. C A O and, uh, and Mr. Spencer, I, I believe that you have your direction, uh, from, from the discussion. I don't think we, do we have to make a recommendation, or, or is, is the, is the information provided sufficient?
So, so, Mr. Chair, I think, I think the information provided is, is sufficient, but we will, uh, do just a, a little bit more research with respect to, to ensuring that, that will be, um, uh, sort, sort of an eligible cost under that Safe, uh, uh, reopening, uh, money. I, 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 I tend to, to think along the same lines as, as committee members have spoke, but, uh, we'll, we'll try to do some research to, to, to confirm that.
Okay, and letters will go in each and every one of them?
Yes, I think, I, I, I think with the, with the timing, uh, I, I, I wouldn't want us to wait till September twenty-eighth before we send those out. So I think the earlier we can get those out, the better.
Okay, words well spoken. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor?
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, while I was, while I was, um, pitching this as a recoverable expense under the Safe Reopening Act, uh, if we determine as a result of our inquiries that it's not an eligible expense, I still think we should do it. We're talking sixteen thousand, and I see a nodding of heads, Mr. Chairman.
I do.
Yeah, I just got to hear that, uh, DeShaw Hairstyle is going to donate, so don't worry about it, we'll, we'll be okay.
I agree. You mean DeShamp Hairstyle?
So ju- 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 just for clar- clarification, we, we, we will mo- move forward regardless, but, uh, certainly our, uh, our, our, our hope is that will be a, a recoverable expense.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I think we can put this matter to, uh, to sleep now, and we'll call Deputy Mayor DeShamp back, uh, to his seat. And we will continue with item seven C, which is again, an, uh, uh, information item, and in your packages, it is on page seventeen and twenty, and it is the, uh, the Summer Canteen Report, uh, which, uh, uh, I think is here in here, the sum of our hearts. So, uh, Mr. Spencer, would you care to highlight your, uh, your briefing, though?
Certainly. Thank you again. Um, so, what I've done is, uh, basically, uh, broken down the, the revenues from, uh, two nineteen and two twenty, uh, indicating the days of operations, the, the total revenue. Um, and then I've broken it down into week, weekends and weekdays, and, and by month, and then also by the special holidays that we typically have. And you'll see that in the, in the charts, uh, at the bottom, so, um, we were open for five more days, uh, than in, uh, than in twenty nineteen. Um, and revenue shows at about fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars more, uh, which is, uh, good. Um, some of the, the items that I feel that has helped, um, is our July numbers were good. Um, our weekend numbers were, were better than, than two nineteen, and that shows in, in, in figure one, basically shows the, the breakdown. Um, obviously, with, um, families, um, not able to really do a whole lot this summer, um, we saw a large number of, uh, people down along the, uh, the Legion Parkway this year, which was great to see. Um, so I've kind of broken it down, as you can see, the comparison from weekends from two nineteen to two twenty. Uh, forty percent was the, the total, uh, gross sales for two nineteen, where this year sixty-one percent of the gross sales was on weekends. So, uh, typically, you saw the, the weekend sales, uh, increase. The holidays weren't as, as, as busy as in past, as you see, the, the chart, figure two shows, uh, two nineteen, twenty-six percent of the sales were from one day for the whole, for the whole two months. Um, where this year, those numbers were, were down because of, again, the, the, the social gathering numbers weren't there. So, um, overall, um, I think, um, it did well. Um, it actually, I mean, there, there was cost incurred. The biggest cost is the wages, and if, um, we hadn't had to have the second individual down there to do the cleaning of the washrooms and what have you, um, then. To do the cleaning of the washrooms and what have you, um then that number basically what is it? That eighty eight hundred dollars, you could basically cut that in half, cause that's basically the two staff members that worked throughout the summer. So. Um but overall, the the numbers were good, but the deficit is still there.
Mike, if I I just would like to draw your attention to to uh the the revenue uh table number one. Uh two nineteen, uh Labor Day, there's nothing in for Labor Day. Now, I know that the canteen was open last Labor Day.
Both of them, nineteen and twenty.
Well, I'm not sure it was open in twenty, and I'll get to that in just a moment.
It wasn't open on Labor Day Monday, it wasn't open. La- Labor Day Monday, it wasn't open this year.
This year, but I'm I'm talking, look, forget about two twenty.
I'd have to go back and look at the actual receipts um for Labor Day Monday. That's for the actual Monday, the day itself.
That's correct.
If they were open on the Saturday or the Sunday, that's okay. But if they weren't open on the Monday, I'd have to go back and look at the receipts.
Okay, okay, that is that is just for the Monday then.
Just the the day itself.
Okay, sorry, I thought you.
Oh, the weekend? No, 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 that's just.
That is a Labor Day weekend, uh really. But but okay, terminology is 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 one thing.
Yeah.
But I guess the question I have to ask then is what day is the go-kart races on? Is that not on the Monday? Or is that on the Sunday? I think it's, I thought it was the Monday. And I know our canteen supplied hot dogs.
Okay, I I can, I'll have to look back at the numbers on that.
Okay, I I I'd look forward to to seeing that. And the other question that I that I just wanna bring up while I think of it is regarding the wages. Um you just confirmed with me that we had two employees, which are students, or well, referred to students or part timers there. We also have a supervisor who I I know looks after the the management of the of the canteen. Is any of her wages included in the eighty eight hundred that you show here? Or is that just for the two, we'll say, part timers?
Through the chair, our supervisor worked very minimal, minimal hours this summer. This is all wages from the students.
Okay, so none of her salary is showing in in these figures?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, I I just wanted that that clarification. So being an information item, thank you. I I'm going to open up for uh questions and concerns and I'll start at this end. Uh gentlemen, uh do you have any questions? Counselor Hunter, I think you want in?
Uh I just have one question. I know we showed that we had a fifty six hundred dollar loss here, but. We're writing off for Colbert if we had two students, two employees there all summer and we generally only had one. Or we, if we're eligible for, uh say, four thousand, maybe it's not a complete half. Half there, I think that'd get us back uh pretty acceptable rate if we just lost a couple thousand dollars on for a service.
It's probably, probably.
I think we should be looking at trying to get the four thousand or so back at a better transfer.
Through the chair, if I may, just so the the reason that, and I I'm not disagreeing with you, Counselor Hunter, but the the reason that these figures were on here was because. When council made the decision to open up the canteen, we didn't know about any potential funding that was coming and it was. Being that we needed two people there. So that's why it shows here.
I understand that. I'm just saying, uh make your.
Yeah.
Report look better at the end of the year.
Not disagreeing with you.
Great. Uh Deputy Mayor?
Uh yeah, so uh again, another uh a good breakdown, I think, uh seeing uh the numbers. Uh that are there and the sixty two days, I mean, it was uh a very, very busy summer there. Uh I think it's a sign of, uh I've said before that COVID was kind of a bit of an experiment for our waterfront. Uh in the sense that it it's showing us the issues that we will have. Uh moving forward as we make the investments in the waterfront, uh the busier it gets. Uh we'll see uh some of these, and this is one of the good the good stories. Imagine if uh we had had a fifteen percent increase on Canada Day and the Civic Holiday. I mean, that's a a minimum of another five thousand dollars in in business plus Labor Day.
Yeah.
Uh minus that extra staff, that's the first profit the canteens ever turned. It would've been a phenomenal year down there. So. Uh um you know, great job, you know, it's it's good, yeah.
Thank you, uh Mister Mayor.
I hate to be the ones throwing the cold water. Um I guess what bothers me most is uh. When I was there a few times this year and uh. I I I couldn't convince myself that we needed two people in there on a full-time basis. Um I'm I'm just kind of, I I'm trying to remember what the hours were. But we must have had more than two people total in order to cover uh the the hours that we were open in a full week, would we not? So how many people do we have total?
Through the chair to the mayor, we uh on on an average, we use three students.
Three. Okay, so that covered the weekends and the days off kind of thing.
That is correct.
And then each day was just a a ten-hour day or an eight-hour day?
Um.
Can't remember, nor hours, but very tight.
Three and a half, three and a half.
Three and a half Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday and then um eleven to seven thirty on weekends.
Right, right, okay. So again, as I say, I just couldn't convince myself as I visited there a number of times. That the uh that the second person was a was a necessity on a full-time basis. But I mean, this is water under the bridge. I'm not going to uh second guess the situation now. Uh but I just wish that uh we had made a little bit more effort to bring this to break even. And I'll like to follow up on Counselor Hunter's uh suggestion that we try to determine. Whether or not that second person was an eligible expense. So those are my comments, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Dillabon?
I, yeah, I I think it's great too. I just um what was twenty nineteen? Can you remember uh like building prep, two thousand dollars for twenty twenty? Is that a little high because of the COVID nineteen or like I I have nothing to compare from twenty nineteen?
Um tha- that's um through through the chair to Counselor Dillabon. So that's uh set up for our Falcon Security monitoring. Um and it's also insurance on on the building.
Okay, so it was no extra COVID nineteen stuff going in like the disinfected or anything like that?
No, that's not included in that, no.
Okay, so you're saying we have cameras down there?
No, that's not what I said. I said Falcon Security to alarm the building.
Oh, alarm the building, okay. So it's the same in two thousand every year or whatever. Okay, no, that's fine. That's all. I didn't know there was a little extra there. Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything? Okay, we're going to, uh thank you, uh thank you for that, uh Mister Spencer.
No problem.
Uh I'm not a, I'm not a big graph person myself, but uh the graphs are pretty. And that brings us now to seven D, again, an information item, and in your packages, it's on page twenty one to twenty nine. And this is the Spencervale Sewer System Budgetary uh Adjustments. Uh there is no recommendation on this uh on this item. Um so I would like to uh, I would like to have Mister Shaw, I believe, uh highlight uh the uh the briefing note.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um recent circumstances in Spencervale will impact the sewer operations budget. This information item is basically to supply a committee and council with information around these items. The first is the uh staff were experiencing intermittent issues with the sewer pumping station, SPS one uh check valves. Uh when they went in to investigate, basically, they they found that the pipe was in in uh not the best condition as well and never. Uh didn't feel they had the uh resources to do the work themselves. Selig Mechanical was consulted and provided an estimate for replacing the pipes and installing the valves. Uh the quote was included from Selig's. Um and the the diagrams of the blueprints with the uh pipes marking yellow and the valves that were replaced. Uh the work was completed September fifteenth and estimated around sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay, and the photographs are there as well?
Yes.
And uh now I would, I would just like to ask one question uh right up front in case uh in case this uh this happens to be an issue. Um but is there any way, shape or form that the work that was needed on this on this system? Was there any way that this could have contaminated the wells that we have heard so much about in the past month or so?
Through you, Mister Chair, um in my opinion, no. It's enclosed in a case, cement casing. So this is basically the pump work piping within the SPS one.
Okay, thank.
Well itself.
Thank, thank you for that information. Uh all right, I'm going to open it up for uh concerns and questions. So I'll start with Counselor Dillabon.
Yeah, where is that well located?
That's uh right at the corner of Drummond's.
Okay, at at the parking lot there.
Yeah, right inside the river, yeah.
Between the nation and the.
Right beside the home.
And and Mister Selig, it it's completed, obviously, with the picture for twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars, is that right?
That's his portion of the work. We set up the bypass. It was required to bypass the system. That's the main pumping station for all Spencervale. So all the sewage from Spencervale goes to that station and is pumped from a forest main to the lagoons. So we had to bypass all the sewage coming in from from the town while they were in the well doing the work. So there was extra costs involved with that. Um those costs were approximately, these are estimates. Uh for CWW, two trucks, about thirty two hundred and eighty dollars. Um we had to also get two new gate valves, which was nine hundred dollars. And then we had to get two porta-potties, about two hundred and fifty dollars for the for the work because the. Um we had to do shut the uh washrooms down in in the Pioneers or the Drummond's Station.
So twenty thousand pretty much would cover, I would think, pretty close with that. Correct? Sixteen seven eighty-two it says.
That's the estimate, that's, yeah.
Who's that told sixteen?
Second paragraph, page twenty one.
All sixteen seven, good, thank you.
Mister Mayor, you have uh questions, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so that's what I wanna go into is the numbers here. So I'm using sixteen seven eighty-two as the repairs to the. Spencervale Pumping Station. It's a pumping station, it's not a well. Pumping station. Sixteen seven eighty-two estimated total cost, right? Unbudgeted capital, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have an unbudgeted capital item there. And then we have an unbudgeted CCTV inspection of our collection system in a in the Spencervale uh system. Now, that is estimated in the fifteen to twenty range. Okay, but we don't have a number on that yet?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna put in fifteen to twenty under, I'm I'm adding this all up here, fifteen to twenty. So another unbudgeted capital expenditure, right?
Correct.
All right, now, offsetting that is the Lagoon Splitter Box, which was tendered. Uh and the tender was awarded, but it's not gonna be performed until twenty one.
Correct.
And that's at nineteen eight ninety-five plus HSD?
Correct.
All right, so I've got two unbudgeted uh capital spends. Of sixteen seven eighty-two and fifteen to twenty on the one side. And a credit on an unexpended capital of nineteen eight on the other side. That roughly?
Uh if 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 I may, uh through 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 the chair, we 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 did have uh that uh uh. The capital cost of that project, I believe, in at twenty eight thousand. So there 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 is, it it was set up to be about twenty eight thousand.
Even better than.
Exactly, yes. We're we're we're, there 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 appears to be about a uh three to four thousand dollar um.
Over.
O- o- overage right now, depending on uh the the remainder of the year. And and if there's any other potential um savings to to come in.
So so that raises my comfort level, Mister Chairman. Those are my questions. Thanks, thanks very much. I I think that uh this has been handled. It's been handled extremely well. Uh I just also wanna recognize at this portion of the meeting. Uh that the CCTV, the closed circuit TV inspection of the collection system in the Spencervale area. Uh can you, can you give me a kind of an idea of what percentage of that collection system was uh was cameraed? Was it the whole thing?
It was not the whole thing. I, it's easier to tell you what wasn't cameraed. We basically did that whole area, including the county road. Um the only parts that weren't were Center Street and Gooden Road and Bennett Street.
Okay, so.
I think and maybe a couple of side streets up in that area.
Okay, not the area where we're getting the well problems?
The area where the well problems were, um the the whole county road from the uh pump station three. It helped, don't worry, from there, including the forest main, was done right to Center Street.
Yep.
Um the side streets, Ryan, Cedar, David, um Irving, and South Street were all done.
Okay, that's great, Mister Chairman. Good. Thanks very much.
There's a map. I think it shows basically.
Yes, yes.
Attached there that shows all the streets that were done and which dates they were done. The GIS map, page uh twenty-five to sixty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Uh Deputy Mayor, do you have any concerns? Counselor Hunter?
I just have one question. We've we've had these uh get quite clear. All these sewer veins have been been scoped and there's absolutely no leakages found in any of these. To do with the, any of the sewer veins when they're scoped, they're all in good shape.
The original uh CCTV work, there was found, there was two gaskets found defective. And they were basically cut out and changed with the T's, new T's were installed in the main. Um because those were found, and in my opinion, I don't see them being a great contributor. Um a leaking gasket compared to a broken main is what we were looking for, is a broken main. That um the testing and stuff that was done by the ministry and by the health unit. Indicated that it was a high probability that it's not the sewer system.
But when you're, when they're clean, when you're cleared, though, the gaskets, I understand, there is no staining or any.
There was no smell. Typically, when you have sewage break, even the lateral, once you dig down there, if it's a problem, you can smell sewage, basically. Uh we saw no discoloration. The the soil was very dry. We hadn't had any rain or anything like that. Uh that's another sign. It'd be darker or something. Uh we saw none, none of that, so.
But basically, through through your experience on the ministry, the sewer system was completely ruled out of any problem?
I, so the the ministry, I don't think whatever say that it was completely ruled out. But it's a high probability that it's not the sewer system. They also did some extra testing. Aside from some of the vaccines and stuff they did, um they did uh, it's almost like a, like a genetic testing, basically. And check for, uh there's there's indicator bacteria that typically comes with E. coli. Um there's bacteroid and voided, and the bacteroid is typically built in higher numbers. Uh than the E. coli in human cases. They found zero. In the voided, which is cattle, which is another common source of those type of things, problems, zero. So zero, zero for those.
Thank you. Gentlemen, nothing? Mister Mayor, do you want back in?
Yeah, so for this portion of the of the minutes, I I'd like it noted that there were no breaks. In the sewage system as we are, um as is being reported on some sources of social media. Uh there was a couple of gaskets that had twisted and that were replaced.
Through the chair, that's correct. We don't have all the footage back yet. But the feedback we got from the CWW operator who was doing the CTT, CTV work. Uh and the operator that was on hand, although he was not there because he was handing out uh some flyers and information to people as well. Not there the full time, but the all indication from those two individuals that there was no problems with the system. Uh we will be getting back a full report with video and it will be thoroughly gone through once we receive it.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman.
Uh thank, thank you, uh thank you, Mister Shaw. That's that's wonderful. Okay, that was an information item, so we're going to move on. We're now at seven D. Uh that is on page thirty to fifty in your packages, and we do have a recommendation on this. And this is uh the expanded types of off-road vehicles allowed on township roads. I have a feeling this could have some discussion on this. Um okay, so uh. Who will be speaking to the briefing notes? Uh Mister Shaw and the CIO as well, or one or the other? Thank you. So, Mister Shaw?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um the purpose of this um action item is to review the township's bylaw, regulations and operation of all train vehicles on municipal roads. And update and comply with new provincial legislation. Um so basically, uh councils passed a bylaw in twenty fifteen with regard to off-road uh vehicles. Uh was amended in twenty seventeen and again in twenty eighteen. Uh on June of this year, Director of Safety Program Development Branch of the.
Um, on June of this year, Director of Safety Program Development Branch of the M T O announced the province's expansion of the Highway Traffic Act. Um, with uh two different types of off-road vehicles that they were allowed on roads in Ontario. And those are basically dirt bikes and Argo, Argo-type vehicles, six-wheel, eight-wheel type vehicles. Um, in addition, the new legislation will permit all train and off-road vehicles to operate on municipal roads and highways unless a bylaw is passed to specify and prohibit their use. Um, this is requiring uh council to prohibit non-approved roads also. It's a, a changeover from the, from the old way they, uh, council provided roads that they were allowed to travel on. With this new legislation, they want council to say which road they're not allowed on. So it's kind of a, a, a switch and it would probably take quite an overhaul of existing of the bylaw. So, um, recommendation is that uh, that committee recommend that council direct staff to consult the Johnstown ATV club and discuss recommendations in regard to the new all-train vehicles on municipal roads with bylaw.
So the uh, the recommendation, the way I understand it is that uh, the uh staff will consult with the Johnstown ATV, discuss recommendations and so on, and then bring this back to another committee?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, I, I guess I, I'd just like to jump in here, uh, and in the, uh, in the briefing note under background, the second paragraph. Um, outlines that the, the, the dirt bikes, the off-road uh unit dirt bikes. And my question would be to, uh, when you're speaking, when staff is speaking to the ATV club, I'd like to know the extent of damage uh to the trails that these dirt bikes can do. I know nothing about the other uh, uh, piece of equipment that's been allowed to uh get on the list. Um, so I just don't know about that, but I do know dirt bikes can do tremendous amount of trail damage. I'd just like, uh, John, Johnstown ATV to uh, to be aware of that and comment on that. So I'm going to now open it up before I call the question for the recommendation. I'll open it up to questions and concerns, and I'll start with uh, with uh, Mr. Bush.
None of this, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Backwood?
I'm gonna have fun ensuring, make sure all these people have insurance and everything, and the age of sixteen. I don't know how I'm gonna do it. I don't have to be able to do it, period.
That's a policing issue, isn't it?
Yes, it certainly is.
Counselor Hunter, go ahead and ask questions, concerns.
I guess one of the comments I have reading true, that I don't have trouble, trouble with them driving on most of the roads, just like by, by, by the rules, and I think it's. It was down to a policing issue that they stay on roads and don't be where they're not supposed to be. Personally, we've had a fair amount of trouble with them in the quarry. And uh, had a few confrontations. But the one thing I, I don't see mentioned any place in the bylaw for these uh dirt bikes and stuff is a timeframe of when they're supposed to be running. Most of the country people don't mind them running down the, around the road in the daytime, or even maybe eight o'clock or ten o'clock at night. But when they start ripping up and down at two or three o'clock in the morning with the mufflers on roaring, they don't get very well received, so. That's my concern and, and, but the limits will be for the villages of Cardinal and Spencerline and Hamlet of Johnstown on the streets in there where they're, they'll be allowed to. Right now, it looks like under this bylaw, they're allowed to run in any of them.
That is correct.
Don't take some of the town ones, be too appreciative of them, you run them out and so on.
I think Mr. Shaw wanted in.
Mr. Shaw, yes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, there's two, two points to make. One is that, that it does state in, in the additional off-road vehicles allowed on roads documentation. That basically the dirt bikes will only be allowed to run in daylight hours because they have no lights, they don't have taillights, proper taillights and stuff on the road.
Says they can affix them.
Well, true, no, yeah, for sure. Yeah, that's.
Okay. Uh Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
You're done. Okay. So, uh, for me, uh, just, you know, going through and reading it, um, you know, especially what the recommendation says is, is direct staff to consult with the Johnstown ATV club to discuss the recommendations in regard to an all. Uh, to a new all-train vehicles on municipal roads. So, um, for me, I don't care what motorbikes do to the ATV trails and I don't, you know, not that I don't care that they get into your quarry. But the discussion that we're having, or at least the way that I see it, is uh how they access municipal roads um to, to get to, to, to those trails. And I think the, the work that was done on the old bylaw, um, uh, was pretty clear on, on the reason that we chose the roads that they could go on. Uh, was so that they had access to, to all the available trail network. So logic would tell me that if we just did the opposite of that, we, we'd have something that would comply. Um, but I would like to hear what the Johnstown ATV club says uh to expanding um what, what's already in that existing bylaw. Does that make sense? Does that make sense with that?
No.
But, but we have one that, that says that, that, that shows the roads that they can go on now. We need to make one that shows the roads they can't go on.
Or have both.
Correct?
That's correct.
So if they're, they're allowed to only go, with the one we have now, if they're allowed to go on the ones they, they are allowed to go on now, they wouldn't be allowed to go on any of the other ones. So to, to do what the recommendation asks or what we're being asked to do, we just do the opposite of what's already in our bylaw.
Yep.
Well, so.
Go ahead.
I think we should realize that, that uh provincial legislation is overriding here. They now have the right to travel on all of our roads. Period, end of discussion. They have that right. Now, that does not give trail bikes the right to ride their trails. So the question that we need to ask is, do we have any problem with them riding all of our sides? Their sides of all of our roads?
Can I jump in?
Just, just one second.
Well, no.
I just want to make sure your point is, is finished. Now, yes.
Okay, so I just don't think that that's accurate, though, because um, when, when they changed the, the law, and I can't remember the date and I don't have it in front of me. They, they made it so that ATVs could drive uh anywhere. What's happened now is they've added dirt bikes and Argos to that existing uh law that they had changed back then. We still chose to limit the way that ATVs could use the roadways. We made it clear we didn't want them racing around the hamlets and the towns. And that they could only use the pathways that were laid out uh to get there. The only thing that's changing this time is that now they've added uh dirt bikes and Argos to that same thing.
No, no, that's not true. They've done two things. They've added, they've added two other types of vehicles to be called ATVs. That's the first thing they've done. And then the second thing that they've done is they've said, you now have access to all the municipal roads unless the by, unless the municipality passes a bylaw saying where you can't go.
Before January first, twenty-one.
And that came into effect on January first.
Of twenty twenty-one.
Can we hear the C I O?
Of, of twenty twenty-one.
Can we hear the C I O?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if it may be helpful if, if everybody turns to page uh fifty of uh sixty-nine. Should be, it should, should be a diagram.
Did you say page fifty?
Uh, page uh fifty of sixty-nine, yes. I'm sorry for those that are.
Yes.
The old technical end of it. I don't know that, I, I don't know that page number if you're going on that, on that report.
So as, as it stands, as we sit here today, all of these vehicles that are shown on the very top line, including dirt bikes and the six-wheelers, are allowed on any of our roads?
No, no, if I, if, if I may, if we look at municipality B. So this is where our original bylaws sort of came, came, came to be. Where those current, current vehicles were permitted on the road anywhere uh where a bylaw was created, which, which is twenty, twenty fifteen or twenty seventeen amendment or twenty eighteen amendments.
Yes.
And the, uh, the, the dirt bike and the um, um, extreme terrain vehicles uh were not permitted.
Correct.
Okay, so at, uh, effective July first of this year.
Yes.
Okay, um, so, right, right now, i- if you, if you wanted to change the, 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 the bylaw, you could permit those two new vehicles. So bylaws made before July first, twenty twenty, will not automatically permit these vehicles on the road.
And so is other two.
That's the other two.
That's, that's the other two.
That's the other two.
Without our, without our, without our bylaw in place.
With, 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 without a bylaw, that would indicate.
Yeah.
Cool.
I don't, I don't think there's any point of discussing twenty twenty, because the new, the new proposed legislation comes into effect on January one, twenty twenty-one.
Correct, oh, oh.
And it's gonna permit everything, everything anywhere.
In, in, unless you, you restrict or prohibit that.
That's right.
Correct.
Unless we, unless we take an action.
Yes. And the only, the only thing that I was saying was that we, we have a bylaw in place that was prior to July first, twenty twenty. So those uh two, the, the new O R V types are not permitted as of, as of right now.
So right now, if I had a, if, if I had one of those motorbikes, I could, I could use it until up to January first of twenty twenty-one.
No.
No. No.
No, you could not.
No.
Okay, I thought it's affected July first, twenty twenty, it's, the bylaw is amended.
So you would have to, you, you would have to amend your existing bylaw.
Oh, okay, okay, I see, yes, yes.
And, you know, in, in order to, to permit those two new types of vehicles.
Oh, I see, now you're Miss Bobby, yeah, okay, I get you, yeah.
So, so I think, so I think the end goal as, as, as the mayor has indicated, is that we, we need to know by that January twenty twenty-one. You know, what if any um areas will be um prohibited or, or, or restricted?
Yeah, well, from my point of view, the only thing that I'm interested in, and by the way, even if we changed our bylaw come, to, on the, on the end of the month, this month. To permit Argos and bikes, they still would not, they would have access to those road shoulders that we granted to the ATV club. They still would not have access to the ATV trails.
That's true.
We don't control the ATV trails. So, the only thing I'm interested in knowing from the Johnstown ATV club is whether they agree with the provincial legislation. That our shoulders are wide open to all. That's the only thing I'm interested in. And I know that there are other townships. I'll give you an example of Ath- Athens. For example, in Athens. A number of years ago, Athens bylaw allowed any kind of ATV on any road, on any township road. So the province is just catching up to Athens. Now, I've asked Herb Scott a dozen times, Herb, you had any problems with your ATVs? Oh, yeah, they're up and down the main street of Athens once in a while. And they do make a lot of noise once in a while at night, but not, not in serious. So the problem is, the problem is just saying, opening it up. There it is, boys. Unless you pass the bylaw saying they can't go here, and here, and here.
They're passing it over us.
Yep, it's over to us, it's all over to us. Now, to pick up on the Deputy Mayor's point, it's easy enough for us to just go the other way. And pass a bylaw which says that they can't go on any municipal road except this, this, and this. That's what we would be doing.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, through, through, through the chair, I, I, I wanna say that the current bylaw would indicate that um ATVs are permitted on the following roads.
Yes.
Right, and, and, and then, yes, I, I, I think that it, that it probably needs to change that, uh, you know, ATVs or whatever the wording is, are prohibited. Or restricted on all roads except, and then that schedule. I think, I think, I think.
Same that, same schedule.
If, if that's, if that, if that is the feeling.
Yeah.
I thi- I think, I think, I think you.
I still like the ATV input on it.
Yes, I think that's, I think that's.
I think the ATV input, put as the mayor said on, however, wherever their well is like, that dirt bikes running their trails, because I know. They've had a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
With dirt bikes running on their trails, ripping them up, so.
And look at Limerick Forest, the mess they may do.
Yeah, well, it's dangerous up there right now.
And our waterfront.
Because they, they, they come out from Ottawa, a whole crew of them, and running Limerick and the girls and ones that ride horses and stuff up, up there. It's just been almost a disaster up there, because they just come shooting across those si- side trails there, there, and they never look, they just think that it's. The wild west, they just do whatever they want. I know a couple of people have stopped them up, up there and, and these are, these are guys from Kanata and Orleans and stuff that are in here running Limerick Forest, just tearing it to pieces, so.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, just to report back from County Council. Uh, you know, when this whole concept came up at County Council, I questioned the county, uh, the county forester, people that are in charge of Limerick Forest. I questioned them at the county, at the county table. Because I was opposed to us giving exclusive rights to ATV club members to use uh the, the Limerick Forest trails. We have people in our township, families, that have four ATVs. And they could go up to Limerick Forest and they could ride the Limerick Forest trails, not paying any registration fees or any trail fees. Now, they have to buy a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar rail pass for each of their ATVs. It's no longer a family activity. So, I questioned them and, and the county was gonna get all kinds of services back from the ATV clubs. They were gonna get, they were gonna get work done on their trails. They were gonna get trail wardens policing the system. They were gonna get this and this and this. And what did they get out of it? They got trail wardens policing the system. They got trail wardens on Limerick Forest trails imposing their.
Authority.
Yeah, imposing their authority, which is in the interest of safety and I'll grant that. But they will not back off. They renewed the agreement with the ATV clubs and with the trail bike clubs. And they didn't seem to give a thought to the horses or the walkers or the others. And I was a little bit disappointed to get that response at the county table, but that's the way it came down.
Well, I, I heard wardens don't, don't do a very good job a lot of the time. They're, they're not around on the, a lot of the.
The trail wardens? Make sure you're talking about the trail wardens.
I was wondering what you.
Not the county warden.
I was wondering what you're talking about. Trail, I, I said trail first.
No, you don't, Ward, no, you didn't. You said work, and I, I made my glasses go down a little.
I was gonna say, that's.
Here we go.
Okay, any other, any other?
We're not getting very much service. I don't think the counties are, are, are getting what they were promised by any means, so.
Fight for the new ward.
So, Mr. Chair, just, just clarifying that, that that was regarding trail wardens.
That, that, that was regarding trail wardens. I think that, that has been, yes, finalized. So, I haven't, uh, I haven't asked uh for a mover or a seconder for the recommendation, so I'll ask that now. Do I have a mover? Deputy E. Champ and a seconder. Counselor Dilva, thank you. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. Carrie. Okay, that brings us to the, uh, the last item on the, uh, for number seven, which is the set fines for water theft. This surprised me when I saw it, but, um.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, the, uh, the electronics are a little, it's a little slow getting there.
So my package was weird today with, with this item, if I can just make a quick comment. My set, like when I downloaded the original document, I downloaded it twice, but when I downloaded the original file, there was the, the, it was in the agenda, but it was not on the file. It didn't, it didn't go that many pages uh until today, and I found it today, and I'm kinda like, what has this been added in? It was very strange. So my original one, when I swipe across. So my original one, when I swipe across, there was no set fines for water theft in it. And now that I'm swiping up the other way, there's more pages than it was there.
Mr. Chairman, just pointing out that my paper package is very reliable.
I knew that, I knew that was coming. By the way, there is a recommendation attached with this briefing note, and this is on pages hard copy 51 to 69 in your package. So, Goran, would you like to highlight your reading notes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the past summer months, concern of water theft from neighboring eastern Ontario municipalities has been shared with the East Sea. Water theft results in a loss of revenue, most importantly poses risk to integrity of the distribution system if taken carelessly or disregard regulations, bylaws, and practices. Two methods typically this occurs. One is basically from bypassing meters. Don't think that's a big issue in Edersbury Cardinal. It's something typically that when staff enter buildings to look at meters and stuff, they have a quick look and never really seen any issues with that. The other one is theft from fire hydrants, and we have experienced that on occasion, or suspected that has occurred. Basically, people come in and take water from hydrant without obtaining permission. Section 99 of bylaw 201369, municipal fire hydrant states, no person shall open, close, tamper with, or interfere with any hydrant valve chamber and service pipe or hydrant chamber owned by the township. On occasion, we've seen dips in our SCADA system where we think it's basically people taking water. It happens on weekends, after hours, and so forth. So the recommendation is basically that committee recommends that council direct staff to review bylaw 201369, pursue and recommend amendments and set specific fines that will make the bylaw more enforceable.
Please to move that recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
I have a mover, and I have a seconder with Mr. Packwood, thank you. I will now open this up to questions or concerns. I'd just like to draw your attention to the recommendation that it directs staff to review bylaw 2008-46. I have a question regarding that, because we also have attached to this bylaw 2008-46. So, has that, 08-46, has that been repealed at any time? If not, I guess, why would it be included with this package if it's not mentioned in the recommendation?
What Mr. Shaw wants in?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's several bylaws existing that weren't repealed that deal with this matter and different things about water, and some of them are contradictory. Some say that people can take water from fire hydrants if they get written permission, which we don't have a form for. There's other ones that state that only firefighters acting in their duties as a firefighter and certified township staff can do it, and different things like that. So there's several different, some actually have sewer and water together in one bylaw. So, and there's nothing for the industrial park that identifies fine set for the industrial park. So we'd like to kind of get all those grouped up and take the parts out and get everything straightened out so there's no illusion about, you know, what the specific bylaw is who is qualified to do that work and to set individual fines so that if people get caught and how we will go about that, if they get caught, then it's enforceable in court.
Okay, so with that explanation, then, this will come back to another committee. And also, for the theft from hydrants, would that be to primarily fill swimming pools and things like that? Water trucks?
Through the chair, yeah. Yes, it could be for that, or it could be sometimes a construction for, you know, water down dusty roads, different stuff.
Yes, okay.
It's always to fill a water truck, correct? Like nobody's taking a hose from a hydrant and putting.
You'd have to live pretty close.
No, I've seen that one through the chair, but I have seen them take totes out, or suspected them of. Anyways, I chased one guy down one time with a tote full of them.
Okay, I do have a mover, and I do have a seconder on this recommendation. Any further questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, if I can reserve the right to ask a question after the deal with the motion.
Yes, that'll be fine. Mr. Bush?
Is there somewhere to fill up a tote? Like, if you go out to cottage country, you can fill up a tote at the fire station.
Mr. Shaw?
Through the chair, you could fill up a tote, but our fee structure right now is if it's less than 1,500 gallons, it's $50. If it's more than 1,500 gallons, it's $60. So $50 for a cubic meter of water would be extremely expensive.
Any other questions or concerns? That was yours, yeah, well, okay. All right, I'm going to call the question, and the mayor has reserved the right to comment after. I'm going to call the question now. All in favor? Aye, and that's Carrie, thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have?
Yes, first of all, through the chair. So, thanks very much for including bylaw 2008-46. And would you please turn to page 69 of 69? I have a question. And the question concerns our rates for water service connections and sewage service connections. I thought, and it's very clear in my mind, that our rate for a water service connection, it was originally set at $1,000 in 2008, but I'm quite clear in my mind that it's been revised to $1,500. So what bylaw now sets it at $1,500? It obviously is not bylaw 2008-48.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. But am I correct about that, Mr. Chairman? It is $1,500?
So, if I may, through the chair, the mayor is correct that the connection fee is 1,500.
For water?
For 1,500 for per service.
Yep.
Per service. So, I'm not sure if the director of operations knows the bylaw offhand.
I don't, sorry.
And I'm not sure. It was amended to update that fee schedule. I'm just not sure what that bylaw number is, and that's part of trying to merge some of these together to get it all sort of under one umbrella, so to speak.
Perfect example. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, that is carried, so we're now going to move on. And we're at item eight, which is councillor inquiries or notices of motion. Do we have any? Mr., I'm sorry, councillor.
I mentioned the mayor, he's going to bring this up, their CEO. With our Colbert case and employees here, the restrictions we have now on showing symptoms and being screened coming in. We're coming into the winter season with two rinks running and snowplowing coming up. I'd like to see our staff, I mentioned Mike, he says he has some kind of program, but we need to have, I think, a very rigorous replacement schedule set up. If we end up that our road supervisor then has a snowstorm coming up, and all of a sudden two drivers come in, they're running a fever and coughing, he's going to have to send them home under the ministry act. So we need to get a very stringent plan in place of who we're going to have the backup drivers and who we're going to have the backup operators for the rink, I think. We need to get staff set up and contact people and get people lined up. We don't want to wait until the last minute in the first of November, and all of a sudden, all the township realizes, gee, we've got a couple of drivers sick. We need to have replacement drivers here. We want to, I think we need to get on the ball and get some people committed that they're willing to come in and work for us as need basis or something here, or. I know that for our rink attendants there, I don't know all the plans Mike has, but I know we have rink attendants in Prescott that were relation rink attendants that aren't working as rink attendants now, but probably we could have some agreement with Prescott or something, that they're just doing cleaning and stuff for them in the wintertime, that we could get them on a part-time basis. If we had to send a couple of rink attendants home or something, or. Maybe we, I know we have some retired ones. I know we have some that's transferred to the roads department, that if there isn't snow or something at night, maybe we can get them to come back over and work on the rink for cover or shift. But I think we need to have something concrete figured out before we get, we don't want to get hit by a landslide, so.
So your comments are for staff to, I guess, discuss the matter with the management team to see what they have, what plan they have if a case like that.
Contingency plans.
Yes, Plan A, Plan B. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just for the benefit of staff, just so they know. United Counties hires a number of tow truck, or snowplow drivers on standby basis. And they have a list of drivers that will come in on short notice, and we, as a township, might be able to plug into that plan with United Counties. I would ask staff to investigate that as one mechanism to address councillor's concerns. Well, it's actually, I think it's council's concerns, because we do, I think we do agree that we have to have contingency plans in place.
Oh, I think you're right. I'd also like staff to inquire as to whether the restart funding would cover people, if we had to pay somebody on standby to, like, we'll say Mr. Smith from Prescott or whatever, if we had to pay, if that would be covered, if we had to pay to stand by. Because you never know, somebody could say, oh, yeah, yeah, just call me, I'll be ready, and then something happens, they get a job, and now they're not ready anymore. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. We'll move. Staff, you're fine with direction on that? Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to number nine, which is the mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to report on three things. I'm going to report on the Ontario Job Site Challenge, and I'm going to report on the Spencerville Wells. And when I'm talking about the job site challenge, I'm going to refer to something called a ministerial zoning order. So just to bring council up to date, Cao Grant and I had a teleconference meeting today with the folks from Infrastructure Ontario concerning their work and the work that they're going through to be able to divest lands from the 10,000 acre Edwardsburg Land Bank. Now, they're going through what they call their due diligence procedures, and they're doing such things as the archaeological stage one report for the entire 10,000 acres. And then they've also done sort of an analysis or an initial study of the environmental impact on the 10,000 acres. So they're looking at the divestiture of the entire 10,000 acres. And as a side exercise, they're specifically concentrating on the 2,000 acres that we nominated into the Ontario Job Site Challenge. Now, they were able to tell us today that there have been 18 submissions received for the Ontario Job Site Challenge, and that the staff, the debt reduction team, is going through the submissions and evaluating the submissions in three tranches. And that's, in other words, in three groups. And there's a number of ministerial people from different ministries and different disciplines within different ministries that have been brought together to evaluate the submissions. So they've gone through the first tranche of six submissions, and they'll be going through the second tranche of six submissions sometime within the next two weeks. And we're in the second tranche to see where, how our submission will match up with the others, I guess you could say. So, that's the first thing to report. And they've indicated to us that they're still very interested in watching this process unfold. Now, we indicated to them, and I'm indicating here tonight to council, that if our submission, if our proposal is accepted, we know that there are a number of county official plan amendments required, township official amendments required, and township zoning amendments required to make this happen. And I think I've already reported to council that I've spoken to Minister Municipal Affairs and Housing about the availability of a ministerial zoning order, which would enable that process with a stroke of the minister's pen. We've, the minister has referred me to the individual in his office who is in charge of ministerial zoning orders. And we have asked our consultants Novatech to prepare for us the resolution that council would have to pass to action a request for a ministerial zoning order. We've received the draft of that resolution from Novatech, and we've submitted that draft resolution to the minister's staff that's in charge of reviewing requests for ministerial zoning orders. Haven't got a response back yet. So I'm just laying that out to bring you up to date on where that process is. Just a reminder that we do have an indication from Minister Pratip Sargaria that he hopes to be able to announce the three winners of the three sites that have been selected to be included in the Job Site Challenge, and he hopes to be able to make that announcement before the end of December. So that brings you up to date on that one. Now, the next thing I want to talk about briefly is the Spencerville Well issue. And you've also seen a number of emails in the last few days about Spencerville Wells. So I'm going way back to August 14th, it was a Friday, when Cao Grant first informed me that he had heard from the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, I'm just going to refer to the best Ministry of the Environment. He had heard from them that a number of residents of our township had phoned him to tell him, the staff in the ministry office in Kingston had phoned Mr. Grant to tell him that a number of our residents had called to say that they had received adverse water sample test results and of different natures. That immediately got Mr. Grant working, and you've heard from both Mr. Grant and Mr. Shaw of the work that they've done to eliminate a possible source of contamination, that is to say, our sewage collection system. So we're now very confident that our sewage section collection system is not the source of any contamination. In spite of our requests, written requests to residents to bring their test results to us so that we can see those test results, as of this date, we've only had 12 individuals bring in health unit water test results to the township office. Those are being reviewed. If I recall, Mr. Grant's briefing to me, three of those results that were brought in showed good results. In other words, zero call forms, zero e-call I, water's good for drinking. Nine of those results showed poor results, or what we would call adverse results, with the notation N-D-O-G-T, which means overgrown, not able to analyze it, but recommended not for drinking. So that's nine. Now, we know where those nine. Now, we know where those nine are, but we don't have a jurisdiction to go and help those people. But those people that brought in those test results indicated to us that they were following health unit guidelines to have the maintenance work done on their wells and on their water systems, because the problem can be anywhere in the entire system. But they were working with the minute, with the health unit to bring about changes. Now, in addition to those 12 that came in, on Monday, August the 31st, the Ministry of the Environment was here with a large staff, working with our staff. And as it's been reported to me, the ministry did 44 samples that they called their samples, and there were another 34 samples taken in what I'm going to call the health unit bottles. The 34 health unit bottles were taken to the health unit lab in Kingston where they were analyzed, and the results sent directly back to the well owner. The 44 ministry samples were taken to the ministry lab in Toronto. Now, let me explain that there's two different kinds of analysis that are done. In the health unit lab, they only culture for two things, presence of coliform, presence of E. coli. And your result comes back is either zero, zero, zero coliform, zero E. coli, or it comes back with some combination which makes it non-drinkable. But at the ministry lab, the ministry analyzes in a much more detailed and much more sophisticated manner the water sample that they've got in front of them. And as Mr. Shaw has already explained tonight, they can tell from their tests what kind of coliforms are present and what's the source of those coliforms. And they have indicated to us that the source of the coliforms are neither humanoid or bovine. Is that correct, Mr. Shaw?
Through the chair, I think it's E. coli.
Okay, E. coli, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so those are the results that we have to this point in time. Now, what are we doing? As you know, we've extended our bottled water, complimentary bottled water till September the 30th. That was done largely because of political pressures, I don't mind saying that. I think it was the right thing to do, gave people some extra time to get their wells, to get their wells looked after. Some people are looking after their wells properly by consulting with the right kind of experts, others are trying to do it on their own, and I don't know what kind of results they will achieve, we'll have to wait and see. The CIO and I had a long talk today about how do we bring this issue to an end? What is the end game here? How can we determine, you know, because some people just don't care whether their water is drinkable or not, because they're using bottled water anyway. And they're quite prepared to leave their water in their well for bathing and other household uses and not be too concerned about whether it's potable. That's up to them, that's their decision. But for others that wanted, you know, it may require, as Mr. Todd explained to us, a more extensive investment to install UV systems or softeners or whatever to bring their water up to a potable standard. But again, that's each individual well owner's decisions. So that's where we stand at the present time. I'm interested in finding a way to bring it to a head and to a close. We have our consultant's JP2G now working on an assessment, and I'm assuming that at some point, they will present us with a final report, which we will share with the residents of Spencerville. Now, I want Mr. Grant and Mr. Shaw to have an opportunity to jump in here and add or elaborate on any details that I may have missed, or to make any corrections to anything I might have said. So give Mr. Grant the first chance, and then he can turn it over to Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, we have our consultants working on, on an update. We, we hope to have another conference call with, with both the health unit and ministry once, once we get some preliminary findings, to sort of get all the agencies' heads together with, with respect to any of the findings. And then we, we hope to have that, that report presented to, to council in, in a public format once, once completed.
Okay, and then just before I end, Mr. Chair, I want to apologize to council members and members of the committee. I, I should have informed you that I had been interviewed by CTV. It happened very quickly. I met him here, did a quick interview. I basically gave him the information that I've just given you. He didn't indicate whether or not it would air or not air, it was CTV News from Ottawa. I really don't know whether it aired or didn't air, because I never saw it, and neither did my wife. I had asked her to watch, to see if it aired, and she did, she couldn't tell me either. So my apologies for that, that's an omission on my part. It won't happen again. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shaw, do you have anything to add to Mr. Grant's statements?
Through the chair, nothing further than that.
Okay, thank you. I, I would just like to point out that I'm very disappointed that in respect to the deluge of vicious emails that were sent out over the weekend, I'm, I'm extremely disappointed because in those emails, it was very clearly indicated that members of council should have been banging on doors because the owners of these wells should have been able to see us. And here we are at a public meeting, they're here to see us, they could have been here to see us, and there is no one here. Very disappointed about that. Sorry to take up your time, committee, but we will now move on to...
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm sorry, councillor.
I wonder, Mr. Mayor, if you could help me out. We had 34 samples with the health unit. How many came back?
We don't know.
You don't know? Because it go, when the help, when you take a sample with a health unit bottle... Goes to the homeowner. Goes directly to the homeowner. Okay, we have nine, we have 12 that was brought in. But that was sort of, they've dribbled, drabbled in since August the 14th. Some were before those 34 were taken, some were after those 34 were taken. Okay, and we had nine, four and three, good. Out of the 12 that strangled in here. And the 44 samples MEO gave us, there's no E. coli. Is that right? There's no signs. That 44 that samples it, MEO? MOE. MEO. MOE. MOE. So out of those 44, oh, I didn't report those results, did I?
No, you didn't.
No, I'm, so out of those 44, 20, just let me find it here, I know I've gone in my notes. Out of the 44, 27 of those came back with adverse results. And the balance came back good results. So that was 61% of the 44 came back with adverse results. My apologies for missing that. Okay, so 17 came back, good. Yeah, and also, Mr. Chair, my apologies to councillor Hunter. Councillor Hunter has really been on top of this in that particular area of David Street, speaking to, I'm gonna let, I actually should let him speak for himself, because he knows who he's talked to and who he hasn't.
Well, most, most of the people that I've got the information from, I'll give credit to my, my sister, she lives in there, her well is adversely affected. She speaks to all, all her neighbors and gives the information back, back to me, what they're doing, doing and one thing or another. I don't really feel it's my place to be going knocking on doors. I don't know, I know quite a few of the ones that have adverse results, but the results is turned in to council here, and it's kind of a private information when it comes to us. So unless somebody calls me, which I will say not one single person has called me.
No.
So I'm not going to go knocking on doors and telling them I know what, what their test is, that's up to them, that's their private individual. They have shared it with my sister, and I know of six or seven of them that she's talked to, that they're working on their wells themselves, they've put corrective caps on their wells, they've, they're trying sanitization, some of them. Some haven't did the proper sanitation, two of them in particular I know, they put a gallon or so of Javix down, down their wells, which for most of us in the country, that sanitizes their wells. But then they found out their wells here are 300, 400 feet deep, so they've been informed that they should have put between three and four gallons of Javix down them to get a thing. So now they're redoing them and resubmitting tests to see how it comes. I, I can't go and talk to anybody, nobody calls me and tells me they, they want, want to speak to me about it, because it's a private well, it's their property. Council, we can support them, but it's not our, in our domain to intervene on private property and private wells, so we can try to find them an answer. And I firmly believe council needs to try to find an answer for them. And if, I think if we can find out the source of what it is, and there is 35 or 40 people that desperately need a, a water treatment system put in here that's going to cost $8,000 or $9,000 or something to put it in, I think we as a council could probably do a community pricing or something for them to get the best price on it, and maybe work out some kind of a situation the same as we did with the sewers. They have a 10-year payment plan or something that we arrange it or something for them. But if nobody asks for nothing, not much you can do.
Thank you, councillor.
And I'd like, and I've had councillor Hunter, I've had one phone call from one individual. I returned that call to that individual within 24 hours, and as soon as that individual came on the line, they said, oh, I'm too busy, I can't talk to you right now, I'll call you back. And I've never heard back. That's the only call they've had.
Everything being discussed on Facebook and pages and a lot of very wrong and, and leading information.
Oh, oh, everything's, everything's the truth on Facebook. You should know that.
And, and in emails, too. Okay, are we on question period now?
Yes.
Questions?
In regard to the situation you were just speaking about, in each case, the 12 individuals who brought in the samples, the 44 from MOE and the 34, were, were they random areas throughout the township, or were they clusters of areas? The, the 12 individuals that brought their results from the health unit, were they 12 random individuals? Or were they 12 individuals from one, one area?
Mr. Grant can answer that.
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Grant to answer if he could.
Sure. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the 12, the 12 individual samples, they, they, they were, a reasonable portion of those were, were a little bit of a cluster, but the 70, the 78 samples were, were taken basically throughout the village, wherever anybody was a home and available that day. The ministry come in, I, I want to say they started sampling a little bit after 8:00 AM, and they, they continued sampling, I believe, until early, early evening to try to give the best chance to get as many samples throughout the village.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Virchell?
Yes, it does.
Any other?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to move on. We do have a closed session tonight, so we'll, we will take a five-minute break to, to clear the, clear chambers. And do I have a...
I have it.
Okay, we do have it.
Deputy Mayor, this is a, the Committee of the Whole proceeding closed session at 8:34 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically KUPI negotiations. Number two, proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local boards, specifically minutes of closed session dated March 16th, March, March 16th, 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, I find we're adjourned for five minutes. The atomic clock says...
Second by Deputy Mayor, that the closed meeting does now adjourn, and the open meeting of Committee of the Whole does now resume at 9:13 PM.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Thank you. Okay, we're now in clo, open session, and we discussed a labor relations regarding our employee, specifically KUPI negotiations, proposed or pending acquisition. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't talk about that, but specifically the minutes of the closed session dated March 16th were, were discussed. Okay, I'm looking for a direction here.
I have that.
Councillor Lowbaugh?
Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Sayad, that the Committee of the Whole approves the minutes of closed session dated March 16th, 2020.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. It's Carrie. And the next item on the list then is adjournment.
I have that.
And...
So moved by myself, seconded by councillor John Hunter, that the Committee of the Whole now does adjourn at 9:15 PM.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.